Let me have everyone's attention before I gavel the meeting to order. I want to welcome you to our council and thank you for being here. Some of you may be aware that we sent out a notice on our procedures regarding addressing the council. I wanted to enlighten everybody and let you know that really the procedures we've started to implement on a more clear basis are strictly those that have been set up by the state law and our ordinance, actually have been in place for years. And we try to have a timeframe where we can keep things informal and discussion, and that's a lot easier when we have small numbers and also when we have issues that we know have been reviewed and screened by department heads. So our objective on a number of these things is to expedite requests and information to the department heads and the mayor's office, who usually, in almost every situation, we have to refer when someone comes to the council. So that's part of the process. If anyone has any questions off of that, there is an attorney general's opinion, and this was done in 1998, that covers public meetings. So it applies not only to the city council, but it applies to other council meetings. Now, when we have a public hearing, we will make sure that folks who come to address a public hearing are given opportunities off of that. And we'll try to accommodate matters that come before the council. We're going to try to keep them focused on issues that are on our agenda. We've had a lot on our plate the last year and a half, and we've had a lot of people come to the council, ask for information that really can be handled directly through the mayor's office and the department heads. So that's the purpose of these changes, so we can function and do our job up here as a city council. With that being said, I'll call this meeting to order. And is Pastor Cagorl here? He's not here. Do we have any other pastor here? We have one, Reverend Green. Would you like to say invocation for us?
You have to do it.
Would you say our invocation? Please rise, and then we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, we come tonight to, once again, thank you for providing us with freedom and providing us with leaders, and we thank you, and we ask that your will be done tonight. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We'll call.
Mr. Powers.
President.
Mr. Knight.
President.
Mr. Bennett.
President.
President.
Honors and recognition. Is this our young honoree?
It is. I'm going to ask Keith Pettis to come up and introduce her coach, Maggie White here. Maggie White, excuse me. Maggie White is probably going to be a future Olympian. She's got the right attitude and she's a competitive, so we're very proud of her.
Thank you, Mayor and the council, for allowing us to have a little bit of time to present to you a young lady that worked really hard and excelled in her sport. Maggie, I don't mean to embarrass you, but everybody knows a little bit. You know, there's two types of athletes. There's people that have all the talents in the world but no work ethic, and there's the type that really struggle to make things happen, but they work really hard. We're fortunate that Maggie's got both. She's very coachable, she does the things she's supposed to do, and works hard at it the whole time. She didn't wake up one morning just coming to swim. She works really hard, and it makes you feel good to see somebody that really truly loves it, works hard, and listens to the ladies and the fans that succeed. And we're very proud of you, and we didn't want to pass the chance to, you know, let Coach Kidd talk about you. One other thing, to make something work, you all say it starts at the top. And the swim coach, Carrie Smith, we've talked about several times, about how well the swim thing is done. She's the one that runs it, trains everybody, makes them work hard, comes up with the different games, the play that they really enjoy, and the really work that they really don't realize. But then I want to introduce Carrie Smith, where she's a aquatic instructor, and let her finish and go through the why Maggie is here.
Okay, well Maggie, come on up. Well, as Keith said, I'm the aquatic supervisor for the City of Ufala's Parks and Recreation. I've been coaching the wave runners for about three years now, and this is our star swimmer, Maggie White, who's 10-years-old. She's been with our team for about two and a half years. So we're here, basically, to give you all some good news and brag on her a little bit. Her parents are Lori and Jeremy White, and she's got two sisters, Mary Helen and Mallory. Mary Helen is eight, and she's actually going to the eight-and-under championships down in Pensacola this weekend, so we're really proud of her, too. We've got Mallory that doesn't want to swim in the meet, so we're trying to finally get her to go. So we want to write a little bit about Maggie. She has achieved seven cuts for the Southeastern Swimming Championships that are going to be held February 28th, March 1st, 2nd, and 3rd down in Nashville, Tennessee, or I should say up in Nashville, Tennessee. Southeastern Swimming represents about 7,500 swimmers from 75 clubs in Alabama, Florida, and Tennessee. So she has worked very hard for her 10-year-old cuts, and she's earned seven, and that's how many you can swim at this meet, so we're excited for her. She is also, her next step is the age group sectionals, which is 14 and under, that's going to be swum at Georgia Tech, and that's the following weekend, and Maggie has earned three cuts for that. And at Southeastern, she's going to try to get three more, and that's the cream of the crop. That includes all of the state of Florida, Georgia, and Mississippi. So we're gathering a lot of sectionals swimmers at that one, and so she's going to that, so we're very excited. Next level will be Junior Nationals, and then Junior Olympics, and then we all know what comes next. So that's our hope for her. Swimming's a really tough sport. It takes a lot of dedication and determination, and swimmers tend to be good students as well. In fact, Maggie is straight eight. She is very organized and driven, and to most of our kids follow directions very well and are high achievers. I think Maggie's going to be a great ambassador for the City of Ufala. So we're very excited for her, and we're proud of her accomplishments so far, and we're excited about this upcoming championship. And we want to see if you all have any questions for her.
Any questions from the council?
Do you want to tell them what you think about swimming, and why you like it?
Well, I love swimming because every day after school, so many people don't have to go to an after-school sport, and I'm very thankful that I get to go to swim. And I just love it because you also get to play around, be in the water, and you don't have to sit around and just be bored.
How many days do you swim a week?
I swim four days a week.
Four days a week. Is that all year or just during the season?
All year round.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful.
She swims, her practices range about two and a half miles of swim every day, so she puts in a lot of mileage in that water. And she's won, we give out awards, monthly awards, and she's won some of those for being a good teammate and kind and considerate to everybody on her team. So she's a good sport and a good role model for even those little ones that are up and coming. So we just want to brag on her, and she's going to be a great ambassador for our city. And when we go to swim meets, everybody goes, "Where's Ufala?", you know, like when we're swimming in Georgia, and so we get to tell them about our beautiful city, and we've got a great representative right here.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. We wish you the best of success. I might add that her mother, Lori, there, is trying to get our community in shape, and held a program last Saturday. It was a little chilly, I know, but I know that she works with PT Solutions and with the Parks and Rec, and the Chamber, heads of Chamber programs for community development. So we appreciate what you're doing, and clearly you're motivating your children to do well, too. Thank you. We have an agenda that's been published and put online. What's the wishes of the council on the agenda?
I'll promote that the agenda dated February 17th, 2014 be approved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Bennett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion carries. We have a consent agenda that includes the city council minutes of the February 3rd, 2014 meeting. We also have the prepaid claims docket dated January 2014, which is included in the packet, and that is in the amount of $1,521,983.01. Also, item C on the consent agenda is a claims docket dated February 12th, 2014, in the amount of $253,070.83. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll promote motion to approve.
Mr. Knight?
A second.
Second, Mr. Bennett. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion carries. Mayor?
I was hoping Maggie wouldn't have left, so I could get her to teach me and Johnny how to swim.
You got that right.
Well, they have programs, Mayor. I know we can set it up. And you know, it's a great stress reliever. You may want to do that.
I just have one item here tonight. Our animal control unit has come up with quite a bit of criticism and some allegations are out there. We're in the process of reviewing our processes and procedures. Reached out to the Alabama Animal Control Association, and they're sending one of their board members down to help us review our procedures and processes to make sure that we're in compliance with all state laws and codes and our city ordinances. I don't know that we, what we're doing right now is the right way to do it. I don't really have a lot of experience in that area, but we want to do it right. So we've got the experts coming, and hopefully we can review what we do. What I've seen so far is, I see a few things that we probably need to improve on, but we'll be reviewing our procedures and policies, and as soon as we know something, we'll update the public on that. We want to do things right.
Would you like any of the volunteers here to be in on the reviews?
Pardon?
Would you like any of the local volunteers, kind of like pickles, to be in on this?
Oh.
We're the ones that know how to do it. We do it. We do it every day.
Why don't you bring that up? Let the mayor take that and just present it to him.
Yeah, yeah. We did that. So far, we've done.
Okay, well, I'll.
We did it last year.
Yeah, this is not a forum for that this time, Mayor.
Yeah, I don't think that we would, we would deal with quite the things that, the allegations that we have in that meeting.
So when will you be available for us to speak with you?
You'll have to check my schedule. Check with Terry Bush here.
Mayor?
Thanks.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Mayor? We don't want to take any statements from the audience.
Yeah.
So the people don't get to speak?
Not, no, not unless you're on this agenda.
Have you ceased and suspended the practice?
Mayor? We're not taking, Mayor, we're not taking questions from the audience. Mayor? If you look, Mayor? Look at me. Mayor?
This is the city council meeting. This is a city, this, all right, this plans.
Mayor?
Got the order. This is a city council meeting, and it is run by the city council president, and we need to respect him. If you want to come and speak with me, I have an open door policy, as everyone knows, and you can set up a time with Mr. Terry Bush. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor.
But that's the other way, we're not getting any access to those kind of questions.
If you'll submit your questions, if you'll submit the questions to the City Hall, Joy White and Terry Bush, and I'll give you one quick example, please. No more questions, not going to take any more questions from the audience at this point. And I say that because we've had a number of issues that have been dragging on here that are not germane to what we have on our agenda today. Mr. Harry Perkins, who put in to speak in the process, had called to schedule to speak when we coordinated what his topic was, which is related to some issues coming up from the Planning Commission. We're going to defer that, he's agreed to defer that, because it's not on this agenda, and we're going to be reviewing that with the department head, the city planner, so we can discuss that. So if you'll submit those to Joy, we'll get them to the city council, we'll defer them. What we're trying to do is address these things in an orderly fashion. So, in fact, no ma'am, we're not going to take any more comments from the audience at this. I'll be glad to talk with you afterwards. I'll be glad to talk to you. The process is to go on record beforehand. Thank you.
You may ask one question.
No, you may not. Not at this point.
Where can I find the procedure?
We have some copies here, and then also it was published in the paper.
Please receive one of these.
And then also the formal procedures in the order.
Give them to him.
Pastor Elsie Green, do you want to address the council's?
I just wanted to say that, Mr. Knight, I want to thank him. He resolved my concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. George.
Oh, you're welcome.
Ordinances and resolutions. We have Resolution 7, 2014, approval to Southeast Solid Waste Authority to file a certificate to the Third Amendment to certify, correction, to certify of insurance of the authority. That's been signed. Amendment to certify. I'm sure it says certify.
It's to let Houston County out of the Southeast Solid Waste Authority.
Right. All right, so the resolution is to allow Houston out of that. And you're on that committee, is that correct?
I'm on the board.
Board?
Along with Tim Brown.
You want to, is there anything else you want to add to that resolution?
No, it's fine. Actually, we did this three months ago. It's coming back up.
Okay. You want to make a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion. We accept Resolution 7-2014.
Do we have a second for that? Second by Ms. Flurry. Any further questions or discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion carries. Next is Resolution 8-2014. This is the bid on fuel bid. Correction.
Jail meal.
8-2014 is accepting low bid for jail meals. You see that? We have three bids. Low bidder was Barb's Country Kitchen, 8.27 daily per person. It's for a two-year period, three meals a day per person. What are the wishes of the council?
That and mine. I'll promote motion that we accept Resolution 8-2014 and ask the council to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cobb. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Resolution 9-24 is the fuel bids. We have that sent out there. The low bid is Petroleum Traders Corporation.
We're asking to go off the state bid. Contract, reject those bids. Better to go off the state.
So what we have is the bids that were submitted by one, two, three, four, five different carriers were higher than the state bid list, and the request of the council is that the council authorized to go by the Alabama State Bid List. What's the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion we go off the state bid.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are any of these folks on the state bid, or how's that?
Mansfield and Petroleum's favors are.
Okay, so some of these folks are on the state bid?
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed likewise. Resolution 10, 2014, accepting low bid for police department software. You recall that we had to upgrade our software and had short order on being able to complete It's recommended that the bid of NitroCool software, in the amount of $27,290, and annual maintenance of $15,600, be accepted.
I'll promote motion that we accept Resolution 10-2014, ask the council to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
By Ms. Flurry. Substantially different.
Real different.
Are the specifications, we checked all at the same?
Place Department's review.
I mean, the next lowest was 117 at a $14,000 annual basis, and then the Southern software is 163.5. That makes it pretty easy.
That's right. Hopefully stay even longer.
Is there?
It's been a motion.
All those, we've got a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise.
Thank you.
Under council action and discussion, I just want to note that a notice was sent out to the council, reference the senior center. Advertising for bids will be going out, and starting in, oh, yeah, let me have that. I'm sorry, let me go back. We had amended agenda that included 11, 20, 14. You sure you want us to cover this one?
Definitely so.
This is Resolution 11, 24, 14. This has to do with the old Fort Browder Road. It's a resolution prepared in conjunction with, between the city attorney and the county attorney. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Gives a background, that road, and then also summarizes the agreement, which we've discussed at earlier meetings, as far as county participation and city participation in opening up that road. The initial cost would be $16,028.33 to be shared equally between the county and the city, and then county to maintain the road, with the city being responsible for.
Garbage.
Garbage and patrol.
Patrol.
And patrolling. Is that?
Yes.
That's it? You want to address that?
Yes, sir. The county and the city would actually be, would split the maintenance and the labor materials for the first initial 24-month period, and then after that initial 24-month period, then that issue would be revisited. So I think, just to kind of summarize, the gate will be removed as soon as practical. It will not be immediate upon the passage, because there's some maintenance that needs to be performed, and with the rain and the weather issues that we've had, that has not already been performed. But the future costs will be split equally for this initial 24 months. Both the city and the county will patrol the road, but the city will be responsible for the trash pickup on the right-of-way own lane. There's no duty, of course, to pick up trash that's on private property.
Right.
What are the wishes of the council?
Resolution 11-2014, ask the council to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cobb, any further discussion? I'd like to compliment the hard work you put in on this.
Thank you, sir.
And coordinating with the county commissioner. I was surprised we were able to get, I thought the road would be permanently closed. Took a lot of work by a lot of people, so congratulations.
And the gates ought to be removed after the completion and the work.
No, we're going to, as far as residents and citizens, we're going to be monitoring this.
Oh, yes.
Make sure it's not an excess cost.
You will monitor it, what, May, June, to be exact?
Yes, I promised the only that I would put it on my calendar for May 1st and June 1st to check and be sure that the gates have been removed, to make sure that we don't let it, that we put some priority with the county in order to get it done before that time comes.
So the county's going to remove the gates?
The county would remove the gates. They're the ones that are actually going to perform the maintenance. We're just splitting the cost for them. So yes, they'll be performing the maintenance. And so, and the Joneses, who have, were the ones that placed the gate initially, they've been notified that the gate's going to be taken down.
I want to publicly thank Mr. Jimmy Calhoun, man in court, for the job well done.
Walter Calhoun.
Walter Calhoun, I said Jimmy. Walter, thank you. That's it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise, motion carries. All right, now we can move on. I started to mention that the advertising for bids on the senior center will go out in February. There'll be several notices. There'll be a pre-bid conference in March 12th, and then the bids will be put out on March 20th. Is that correct?
That's right.
Correct? Everyone's understanding off of that? Finance Committee?
Had a meeting this morning. Some good news of revenue cracking, as we expected. So that's going along relatively well. We've got some short-term and long-term financing we're going to make some decisions on coming up in the not-too-near-future. The A-Trip funding for the three county roads in the city limits is May 16th.
You said the middle of May, they think, projected.
Middle of May. They're going to issue bids on all those, all three of them at the same time, or issue the contract on all three at the same time. Currently, we are in the process of reviewing the 2014 budget, and we're always expecting the department heads to come back with a five-year capital plan, and this is in regards to our S&amp;P checklist. So the capital five-year plan will be in the process right now as well, which in turn kind of rolls into the 2015 budget, which is all kind of going to fall in about the same time. We've got a lot of stuff going on as far as planning as well. That's basically all I got.
Okay. Education, library, zoning, and chamber, already made the reference to reviewing the proposed ordinance changes that are coming up out of the Planning Commission. Sherry, we want to meet and get together off of that, in specific relating to Mr. Perkins, issues that he's raised, so we need to do that before the next, before that ordinance comes to the council. Chamber, I mentioned the chamber had an event in coordination with Parks and Rec this last Saturday. How did that go from the, you had some other vendors there, Keith?
Yes, sir. There were close to 20 vendors. It was very well attended, and it was a great first time. So we're hoping to go it next year, but very good participation. A lot of people saw some things that they wanted to do and join, and different programs from it, not just the community center, but Walt Steppes and the mayor and others, and so it was a good feeling.
The only other report I'll give, and I didn't mean to take any years, Mr. Cobb, he can follow up on that, on Parks and Rec, but the other report on the library, the NAACP held a Black History Month program at the library, which was very well-attended and involved the youth, and it had to do with speeches and historic notes, and there's going to be a follow-up on that. Hopefully, some of that will be incorporated with the pilgrimage. We hope we can arrange that with the students off of that. Parks Recreation and Airport?
Keith, you want to get back up? You've been up one time.
I don't want everything that you do.
No, I know. Thank you.
Streets Sanitation Sematary, Ms. Flurry?
We've had a lot of weather here lately, and I think all departments have handled everything that ensued after that very well, as far as keeping the roads ready and getting things picked up afterwards and cleaned up. Appreciate you guys.
I would just like to mention to the council and everybody here, the Arbor Day is a week in Tuesday, February 25th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Barnes Market.
Would you explain to folks what that really, what really takes place at that time, please?
Well, I'm always a member of Tree City USA, and one of the oldest in the state. We're, it is to be our 29th year, being a member of the Arbor Day Association. And every year, to be a part of this organization, you have to have a tree ordinance, you have to have a tree committee, and you have to have an Arbor Day. And so this will be our 29th that we're having. And so this will be our 29th that we're having on Tuesday. Every year, we give away so many trees. This year, Trees Ufala has given us enough money to buy 200 trees, Alabama Power is going to buy us trees, and Alabama Forestry Association. So we've got lots of trees to give away, and then refreshments and a little bit of music. Just a year of celebration, and I do it in every state. For Alabama, it's always the last two weeks.
Yeah, so if you have some land and you want to put some trees on, this is a great opportunity to go down there and get some, I know they've had anything from crate myrtle to other types down there, I'm not an expert in that area at all. Thank you. Police, fire, and personnel.
If you're noticing your package, you got those reports from your chief in your fire department, and you got a report in there from the police chief. You can see that they got the men working, and I would like to really let the mayor, the police chief, we met with some of the citizens and some of the ministers, we've had two meetings, and it has been very, very progressive. We will meet again, and we will be looking for input. Right now, I don't want to give any details out until we can give something final, so we can finalize some answers for the community, but I want you to know that some work is going on in the community with the police department, citizens, and ministers, and we will report back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to add that because we've limited how we're going to carry on the discussion during this meeting, you still are invited to contact us, as I've noted that everyone has different schedules, but we've been fairly available, Mr. Perkins can vouch for that. In fact, I've even had TV crews show up in the middle of my office without announcement sometimes, but the City Hall and the staff there is the first place to start on some of these issues. Second thing is, come see us, and we're going to try to keep track of these items. Appreciate your cooperation in this effort to help us keep our meeting organized. And I see that, I think Pastor Jeffrey Cagorro is here?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we don't have it on the agenda here, but I think it might be good that you can give us a benediction unless there's an objection, is there a council member who'd like to object to that? I didn't think so. So Pastor Jeffrey Cagorro, thank you for coming, and we, as you see, we may have started a little bit ahead of your clock, but if you would give us a benediction at the end of this meeting, I'd appreciate it. All stand, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, dear heavenly Father, we come before you once more, and we say thank you for your awesome Lord. Thank you for being with us, as we have been discussing the business of our community. Thank you for the leadership of our leaders, and we thank you for everything that has been discussed. As we conclude this business, our prayer is, Holy Spirit, continue to be with us. Help us to be a united community. As we grow, give us the strength and the wisdom to continue and deliberate and finish everything that we have already started that needs to be finished. We pray and ask you, in the name of our Jesus Christ, amen.
I'd like to add, Pastor, I know your wife's from Zimbabwe, are you from Zimbabwe?
Yes, I'm from Zimbabwe, too.
We're glad to have you in our community, and thank you for being part of our service. This meeting stands adjourned.